All right, thank you, Brian, and welcome everyone to this May 20, 2024, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We're going to start tonight with a proclamation, and the mayor is out of town, so I'm going to do it. This is for Building Safety Month. Wyatt, are you designated representative for this?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, well, I'm going to come down.
All right.
Whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential roles our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disaster strikes, and whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, among many others, and whereas these modern building codes, building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes, and whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, and whereas Building Safety Month encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety, now therefore I, Patrick McCloskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Building Safety Month in the City of Homewood, Alabama.
Thank you.
I would hope you'd say something.
Okay, good. All right. I was, Brian, if you don't mind putting that picture back up, I was really honored and excited to attend the governor's proclamation of Building Safety Month for this year to represent the State Code Officials Association, which I'm vice president this year, and also to represent the awesome vibrant city of Homewood and all that's going on here. Main reason being is it's always a challenge to boost public awareness. Seems like we operate in the background so many times a day we hear, "Well, I didn't know this," or "I didn't know you had to do that," or "we didn't know this," and we don't expect you to know everything, but we do expect you to know that there is a department that is brimming with eagerness to help you. So, anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Wyatt. All right, so with that, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we're going to start tonight with an invocation by Counselor Harden, and that'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Let's bow your heads. Dear Lord, we just want to thank you for the freedoms we have in this country. Thank you for the hardworking people at the City of Homewood. Thank you for the city council and help us to make good decisions as we move forward. Amen. Let's face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Harden. Mr. Seacrest, if you will please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualdney.
Here.
Here. Alamon. Wolverton. Sims. Jones.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Nelms.
Here.
Andrus.
Here.
Harden.
Here.
President Wyatt. Here. All right, so we have a quorum. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of May 6, 2024. This has previously been distributed. I entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualdney. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? As are approved seven to zero. All right, next, we have board vacancies. We have an at-large HEC appointment that we got an application after the deadline, so I'm going to reopen that until June 10th at 4:30. That applicant can, will count that one as within this new deadline and take any new applications at that point. All right, there are no additions to the agenda tonight, so we'll start with the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, I need to approve the agenda. I entertain a motion and a second to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that is approved seven to zero. Now, we'll do the consent agenda. I entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualdney, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That is also approved seven to zero, which brings us to old business. First item, 010524, request to authorize the mayor to sign an easement agreement with Alabama Power to permit service to a ceasefire fiber hub previously approved by the city. It's brought to us by Cale Smith, and we'll start with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on May 13th, and after hearing from Cale Smith and Brian Lawson, we voted five to zero to recommend approval.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That is approved seven to zero and will be Resolution 2463. Next item, 020524, request to surplus file cabinets, various furniture, and other items from the Finance Department offices, as well as eight file cabinets from the Inspections Department. It's brought to us by Melanie Jennings, J.J. Bischoff, Stephanie Suttles, and Wyatt Pugh, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval.
All right. Mr. Kendrick, will you give us our first reading?
Yes, it's an ordinance to declare certain property a surplus. Hereby established and declared the following described personal property of the city is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes and is declared surplus property to twelve file cabinets, two wood file cabinets, two desks with credentias, wire, file holders, one office chair, two hand sanitizer machines, and one bookshelf. Section two, the mayor and clerk is authorized and directed to dispose of the property by public auction to the highest bidder.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. I would now entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Harden, and a roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualdney.
Yes, sir.
Here. Alamon. Wolverton.
Here.
Sims. Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelms.
Yes.
Andrus.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President Wyatt.
Yes. All right, so Mr. Wolverton's here now, so that is eight to zero. We have a motion for approval from Finance, so Mr. Seacrest, if you will give us another roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualdney.
Yes, sir.
Here. Alamon. Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims. Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelms.
Yes.
Andrus.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President Wyatt.
Yes. All right, so that is approved eight to zero and be ordinance 2900. All right, next item, 030524, request for consideration of hiring four new police officers as SROs, brought to us by Chief Ross, and this is going to have two different resolutions, one to create the position and one for transfer of funds, so we'll start with creating the positions and a report from Finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee meeting after a hearing from Chief Ross voted five to zero to recommend approval of the resolution creating four new positions.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That is approved seven to zero and be Resolution 2464. And now another report from Finance regarding the transfer of funds.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee voted five to zero to recommend moving $250,000 from carryover fund balance to fund the new four police officers.
All right, so we have another report from, another motion, excuse me, from Finance. Any questions or comments?
I do want to comment, that actually was eight to zero, that last one.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, it was eight to zero, I forgot that we, Mr. Wolverton got here. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion from Finance on the transfer of funds. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that is also eight to zero and be Resolution 2465. All right, next item, 040524, request for consideration of budget amendment to fiscal year 2324 to transfer funds to overtime account. This is also from Chief Ross, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The, after hearing from Chief Ross, Finance Committee voted five to zero to recommend the approval of the transfer, which totaled $95,000 to overtime.
All right, so we have another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That is approved eight to zero and be Resolution 2466. Next item, 190424, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of sign variances at 2600 18th Street South, which is Robey Mans Automotive Services, and we will start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee met on April 29th and heard from Mr. Krakenberger and from Cale Smith and voted as a committee three to zero to set the public hearing for tonight at 6:00 p.m. and to refer this item out to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing. And the action, a motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and let's see, we've got Representative Robey Mans here. If you will just give us your name and sign in and then tell us what you're asking for.
Sure. My name's Kenny Krakenberger, owner of Robey Mans, the one on 2600 and 2630 18th Street South, looking to update our signage from the old logo, and really, the vinyl is starting to peel back, so we're going to paint the buildings to meet the Homewood, you know, standard that we're looking to get, along with updating the logo. So, actually, the signage for both buildings will actually go down a little bit, and so that'll shrink, but we're going to update to a more modern logo and kind of fit in with the Homewood vibe that everybody's looking for. So, I'm asking for sign variances to update the signage tonight.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask Wyatt a question, because we're doing a sign, like, for, it's more than one wall sign, right?
That's correct.
But I have a question, if there's two separate addresses, does the same thing apply just because it's one building?
It's two separate resolutions.
Yes.
This is just 2600.
Oh, sorry.
One on the side, that's right.
So this particular building is going to have three wall signs?
Okay.
Two on the side of the canopy?
Right.
And one along the front.
Got it.
That's variance one and two.
Okay.
And then variance number three is for a height of the copy. They're asking for the logo to be 72 inches high, and in the downtown district, 24 inches is the max allowed by the.
What about the length of it? Is it 72 inches high? It looks, I guess it's about the percentage of it, of the wall, I'll call it.
So, any of the, any of the individual wall signs would be okay area-wise?
Right.
Taken individually? So, area is not really an issue.
It's just the size of the font. That's right.
But overall, the signs are smaller than what are there right now.
Yeah, and it's what could be.
Yes, agree.
All right, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not that I'll close the public hearing. Ask if there are any other questions or comments from council.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion for Ms. Smith, second for Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, so that is six to two and is approved and will be Resolution 2467. All right, next item, 200424, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of sign variances at 2630 18th Street South. This is also Robey Mans, and we'll start with another report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith.
Same song, second verse. We met on April 29th and heard from Mr. Krakenberger and set up, voted three to zero to set the public hearing for tonight and refer this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Sims.
All right, so I'll go ahead and open this public hearing. Can you just tell us about this one?
Yes, sir.
So, same, same deal, updating signage, vinyl's starting to peel off, trying to change the logo to a more modern look, paint the buildings, make it a little more Homewood standard. So, again, the sign variances are going to, I think it's the height deals again.
It's the same, the same requests.
And again, they're smaller than what's there existing now.
So it's a request for two additional signs. There you go, that's better. And then, and then a 72-inch, and we have 24.
And I apologize, I was still in trial, so I wasn't at the committee meeting on this. Is the sign on the far left, is that on the side of the building?
On the side of the building. So really, we're going to have six signs.
So, if I may, we had, these signs are already there, and we've had them there since I've been there, and that's been since 2011. So, we all were asking to, is to update it, make it more modern. We're not changing anything in that regard, so that's, that's all I'm asking for, is variance to continue doing what we're doing, just make it more modern.
Is the side, the side of the building, is that the side facing the?
Post office. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I want to be clear, though. I mean, we, we wrote a sign variant, I mean, we wrote a signed ordinance to update downtown, and, and, and we envisioned, you know, signs that were coming down. If you look at the Shell Station and the Chevron Station, you've got this huge sign, and then Chevron has a nice small sign, and that's what we envisioned. So, I appreciate you coming in and replacing what was there, but what we were wanting, or what I was wanting, I'm probably the only person up here that feels this way, I was wanting to, you to abide by the signed ordinance that we wrote for downtown, which is the 24 inches, not to say, "Well, we had this before."
Right.
But that, that's my position, is that we wrote the signed ordinance for a reason, and I wish we would abide by it and not just have every variance come through, approved. So, that, that's kind of my, my position. So it's not necessarily just updating it, I mean, if you, if you change it, it needs to be within the ordinance.
Fair enough. Can I ask you, though, is that done across the board down in downtown Homewood? Because I've seen a lot of signs go up since that's been done that have not followed that rule. And so as a business owner that's been there a long time, I'm watching a lot of things.
Well, I mean, unless they were voted and approved as an ordinance, if you know of some that were not, then you need to let Mr. Pugh know.
Right. And that, that's fair, but I'd, like I said, as somebody that sits on that office every day and watch the changes that go around and watch certain things happen as far as variances go, and then being told, you know, "Hey, follow the rules here," but other people aren't, it's kind of hard to sit as a business owner there.
Well, I mean, you're, my only response is, man, you're right on the road. I mean, you can see, everyone knows where your business is. I don't know why we need that six times the, the size of what is allowed for the downtown zone. I mean, I just, I don't know, it just seems a little excessive to me, but.
Brian, can you put it back up for me, please? Yeah, I, so, this is my position. I appreciate that, that, what you're saying about treating people equitably and, and understand that argument, don't, I'm not, not really getting on that line of thought right now. My issue is the one on the side, which, quite frankly, just seems a little excessive to me, given the, the other sign variances, and I apologize that I wasn't here at committee to, to voice this, but I, and I also appreciate that you are updating the signs and making them smaller and all that. It just, for me, that's just one too many, but, you know, every, that's just my personal opinion. Okay, anybody else here to speak for or against this item? Not that I'll close the public hearing and ask if there are any other questions or comments from council.
Can we split? Can I make a motion for the first two, the front 18th Street, to approve those two?
That'd be up to him.
Or does he have to split that?
Yeah, so.
Resolute, exhibit, or flight, whatever y'all prefer.
Yeah, so I can make a motion, but the two.
You can, I'm just trying to make sure what we're doing, if you're talking about that. Wyatt, that would still be a variance for one extra wall sign and then the?
And the height.
The height, if, is what she's talking about. Correct?
I would make that motion.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion for Ms. Andrus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Smith. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, so that is also six to two and will be Resolution 2468.
So the motion was to approve, not approve the one on the side?
Correct.
Correct.
The two facing 18th Street.
All right. Next item, 230424, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of sign variances at 740 Shades Creek Parkway, brought to us by Morgan Stanley and David Silverstein, Jr., and Wyatt Pugh, and another report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee met on April 29th and heard from Mr. Silverstein and voted three to zero to send, to set the public hearing for tonight, 6:00 p.m., and refer the item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Sims.
All right, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Let's see, Mr. Silverstein at the podium. If you will, tell us what you're asking for, please.
Yep, good evening again. I'm here to request some sign variances for our project located 740 Shades Creek Parkway. We have negotiated a lease with Morgan Stanley. They will be occupying the entire 30, approximately 30,000 square foot building. The zoning ordinance or the signed ordinance for C1 provides that any sign, one wall sign per tenant, being that it's a single occupied building, they're requesting for two wall signs. Given the topography of the site and the location, one would be what we would call on the north exterior signage, as well as on the south exterior signage. And then additionally, we are asking for a monument side on Lucky Drive. The reason we're asking for the variance for the monument side is because?
The monuments.
Oh, yeah, that's already been done.
It's already.
Yeah, it's compliant.
Yeah, fair enough.
It's just for.
So it's just top of building signage, because C1 only provides it has to be at the lower level, and so additional wall sign.
All right, and again, I apologize that I wasn't at committee. I'm getting a little lost. Mr. Pugh, you want to help me out?
Yes, sir. Okay, so the monument sign doesn't even enter into the picture.
Right.
It's, it's compliant the way it is. The, the request, though, is they want two wall signs, one on the Shades Creek Parkway side and one on the back, around the back.
For the park.
Yes, that's right. So that's.
There should be some additional exhibits to help.
Yeah, there was a picture from that.
So that's facing the visitor parking area, which is not visible from Shades Creek Parkway.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other is, keep going, that is visible from Shades Creek Parkway.
So it's a numbers variance, number one, and then number two, the ordinance on multi-floor buildings requires that the sign be at the ground floor only, so this is a request for a variance for a sign in a location other than the ground floor.
So it's one extra wall sign and then where it's placed.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not that I'll close the public hearing. Ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I just have a comment, and it's about the sign ordinance, because common sense would tell you, if a building is on a hill and has trees in front of it, clearly you cannot see a sign that's on the bottom floor. So I think we need to maybe consider the idea that in certain circumstances, a floor, an upper level sign would make sense and would not need to be, have variance requested in order to do that. It's kind of like a side, you know, a double, you know, a corner lot, where it just, to me, it just makes sense. If a building is where it's located, you can't see the bottom floor, you shouldn't have to come and request a variance to put a sign above. I don't know, I just think there's common sense things we need to work on.
Well, I think that would be hard to put into an ordinance, I guess is my point.
The whole tree should be gone.
Right, you know, I mean, you, you can, you can mess around with tree, I, I, anyway, that's a, that's a longer discussion, but I, I think that might, I guess my point would be if, if you can't see it from the ground floor, that's actually a hardship that a variance would be appropriate for, as opposed to what we often get variance requests for.
I just wonder if there's a way to.
All right. I did have one question. Yes, Mr. Gualdney.
I wasn't here during the committee either. To clarify, the, the front sign on Lake Shore would have to be on the ground level. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, without variance.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. Andrus, second for Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, so that is seven to one and will be Resolution 2469.
If I'm, can I make a public comment? Just, I've been meeting with several of y'all since 2019 for this project, and we're finally there. Last couple of weeks, we're get, ready to get our loan closed and start construction, so it's been great working with, with all of you and Cale and Wyatt and Sherry, so just very appreciative of all your efforts and time, and also thanks to Mike helping us get through some of the abatements process. So just wanted to say thank you all.
Welcome to Homewood, Morgan Stanley.
Yes.
That's big news.
It is big news.
All right, next item, 100424, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a final development plan at 232 Green Springs Highway for Bank of America to permit the construction of a 4,235 square foot single-story branch bank, as well as associated parking, landscaping, and other side site improvements. This comes to us from Cale Smith and from the Planning Commission, which had a six to zero to one favorable recommendation. And we'll start with a report from Planning and Development. Ms. Andrus.
Yes, after hearing from Connor Patton, the committee voted five to zero to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing that was reset for tonight, May 20th at 6:00. The motion was made by Counselor Andy Gualdney and seconded by Counselor Nick Sims.
All right, so with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. If you will, just tell us your names and tell us what you're requesting.
My name is Park Grimmer. I'm the owner of Green Springs Shopping Center. We're flooring to core, Harbor Freight, Dollar Tree, Me Pueblo, and a few other tenants are located, and we're having out parcel we have created that we shared with the, the zoning board, just between the entrance where the traffic light is on Green Springs and our pile-on sign, and it's going to be in that overflow parking area that we had. We have plenty of parking for, for the shopping center, and that area is usually used for people that are carpooling or trucks or whatever, so I even have vendors that come in and try and sell tacos and fi- you know, all kinds of stuff, so, but that's what we want to do, is put the bank there and improve the look of the center.
Yeah, and I'm Connor Patton with Kimley Horn, a civil engineer here representing Bank of America, yeah, here to, happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not that I'll close the public hearing. Ask if there are any questions or comments from council before we have the first reading.
Mike, could, I mean, sorry, Brian, could you pop the picture of the, the, not that, the actual rendering? We had it in committee. I just wanted to show it because it looks really good, that's not it, but, either way, it looks really nice.
Yes.
Yes.
We will be reducing amount of asphalt. You can kind of see from here where the front parking is along Green Springs Highway, it's right up on the property line. We're adding back in roughly 15, 17 feet of landscape there, so it'll definitely be an enhanced look.
All right. Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us a first reading.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to approve the final development plan required by the Green Springs Urban Renewals Zoning District for the property described in section one below and in exhibit A attached here, too. Whereas the Planning Commission of Seaview Homewood is favorable recommend the approval of the final development plan as required by the GURD for the property described in section one. Now therefore, be ordained by the city council as follows. That the final development plan for the following described property located at two, three, two Green Springs Highway and legal description attached to exhibit A shall be here by approved pursuant to the final development plan attached to exhibit B. Section two, that from and after the act and the mis- ordinance by the city council and approval by the mayor as otherwise becoming law, that the final development plan attached to exhibit B shall control the uses and restrictions applicable to the property described in exhibit A. Section three, that May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, six o'clock p.m. is a time and place for the public hearing, in which time all persons will have an opportunity to be heard. Section four, that city clerk is given notice as required by law of the public hearing. Section five, any part of provision or is declared to be unconstitutional and valid by a court of competent jurisdiction, all of the parts or provisions not thereby affected shall remain in full force and effect. Section six, the order shall become effective merely upon its passage and approval by the city council and mayor as otherwise becoming law.
All right, thank you very much. And now entertain a motion and second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Mr. Gualtney, and a roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that is eight to zero, and now entertain a motion and second for approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Ms. Smith, and another roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes, so that is approved, eight to zero, and will be ordinance twenty-nine oh one.
Thank you.
I want to thank Mr. Grimmer for doing such a good job keeping your shopping center up.
We tried.
We've worked hard on Green Springs, and we appreciate that. And that's an exciting project at Bank of America. Come to Homewood.
Right. Appreciate it. Thanks for y'all's help.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and second for approval of that agenda.
So moved.
All right. Motion for Mr. Jones, second for Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved, eight to zero, which brings us to other new business. First item, seventeen oh five twenty-four, request for the mayor to sign contract renewal with, how do I, co-adjunct for city clerk's office mail-out folder inserter. This is brought to, brought to us by Bo Seacrest. This was a time consideration. Bo is saving us how much money?
Currently, quarter, quarterly, we're paying two thousand two hundred and nine dollars, and the new contract will be five.
Seventy-six.
Five seventy-six a quarter. So roughly sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars a quarter.
But it had to be done by the end of the month.
Oh.
So Bo asked me to put this on other new business.
Thank you, Bo.
To talk to Mr. Jones about it, and, and I agreed to do it rather than send it through committee. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Mike, is it, is it the five hundred, I thought I read that it was per month. That was the per month. That's what I read the contract say. If it's quarterly, that's great. I, I just, when I read it, it said in the little table of, or the summary.
It says, well, it says thirty-six months, which is three years.
And the, the monthly amount is five hundred, right?
Five seventy-six ninety-eight.
Okay, so we're, we're saving, but we're, we're only saving about three, four hundred, we're saving about a thousand a year.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, per conversation, yeah.
So we, I'd love for it to be that amount per quarter, but that's not how I read it. And so I'm still okay. I mean, it's, it's a savings, but I just wanted to.
It says quarterly invoicing.
But wouldn't it be the monthly amount times three?
It says unit.
Like we pay the transit authority.
Is the unit quarterly or?
It says quarterly invoicing. That's what it says. It's times for three years. So I can answer the question. All has to purchase.
It doesn't, it doesn't have an annual amount or anything?
It does not.
Either way, we're, we know we're saving money.
Like I say, if you can go clarification on that, that's just how I read it. So I would move to approve.
I apologize. I'll get that clarified through with the representative.
Okay, I'd move to approve.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones.
Second.
Second for Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is eight to zero, and will be resolution twenty-four seventy. All right, which brings us to our last item, eighteen oh five twenty-four, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of May seven, twenty twenty-four through May twenty, twenty twenty-four. This is brought to us by J.J. Bischoff, and I believe Mr. Gualtney was back there reviewing them.
Yes, sir. After, after a high-speed review, everything looked good. I didn't have any considerations. The only thing that stuck out was the, the continued payment to maintain the street lights on sixty-five since Alda will not do it for us, even though it's their road. It is a significant amount of money. I don't know how often we're doing it, but it seems like Alda should be performing that function since it's their street. So with that, I would make a motion for approval.
Second.
All right, motion for Mr. Gualtney, second for Mr. Harden. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved, eight to zero, and will be resolution twenty-four seventy-one, which brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. I know the mayor's out of town, but Mr. Bischoff, you have anything? All right, Mr. Gualtney?
I'll take just a moment. I wanted to recognize a couple of folks through, through public safety. I had received some notes of accommodations that police had issued for officers in their ranks and corporals. I just wanted to highlight their names and basically commend, give them recognition from council as well for all of their outstanding teamwork, their attention to detail, the quick thinking that they exhibit on, on the job, day in and day out, and furthermore, you know, can, can commend them for their consistent dedication to duty, serving the city and the citizens of the city. So I don't, it's one of those things that we probably should do more often. It's a, you know, we don't always get the opportunity to hand out praise, but I'll, I'll take that as an opportunity to do this more often. But Corporal Rosenhunt, Officers Goodman, Mize, C. Sutton, Raider, Leonard, King, and Bagby, and Corporal Bruges, and Corporal Adams all have received accommodations for the months of February, March, and April. I have the write-ups here if you would like to go through and review them. They're quite interesting, the things that they go through. It's stuff that we don't see every day, but it's very dangerous activities they have to perform. You know, we see them in the neighborhood, but this is the kind of stuff that happens during the day, during the evening, that puts their life at danger, but keeps us safe, that may not be observed in every moment. So if you run across them or any of the officers in our ranks, please give them a nod and say thank you for all that you do to serve the city of Homewood. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Oh, and I'll set public safety immediately following finance.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Wolverton?
Sorry, I was picking up, get up from soccer practice. Did, what did we end up doing with HCC?
We reopened it for two more weeks because we, the only applicant we got was after four thirty.
No, we, we already had one from two weeks ago. Womack, so I was going to move to appoint her.
Then we need to go back and look at that. We'll wait till next time and let's.
I mean, I, I know for a fact Nancy Womack applied.
I don't, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just telling you, we got another one, so we need to verify when we got that, what time we got that to make sure. So let's wait and do it at our next meeting.
Okay. I, I was, I was just hoping to appoint her because they meet tomorrow, so.
I understand. What I'm telling you is we got one in this afternoon, and I want to make sure about the time of that. If we have another one that was already in, I want to make sure that we're not.
Yeah.
Doing something that we shouldn't.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's right, it's right there in the email. That came through at five thirty-nine p.m. today.
Okay.
The, the second one, so it would've been after the time.
All, all, all I'm suggesting is.
Okay.
What you're, you're, what I've been told came in and what you have in your mind are not exactly the same, so I want to verify that before we approve.
Well, I would just hate to say that we're going to reopen it and allow somebody else that didn't make the timeline.
I'll revoke the reopening it. I don't have a problem doing that.
I got you.
But I want to make sure that you and Mr. Seacrest are, have the same information before we appoint someone. That's all I care about.
Sure.
So let's, let's hold off until next time and go back and verify. It may well be that we've got it handled, but, well, I understand, but he also had different information about your first one, is what I'm saying. So I just want to wait and make sure we get it right.
Okay. I got you. Sounds good. Um, uh, you know what? Okay, we got it. That's fine. We'll set Public Works to follow public safety. Other than that, just congratulations to all the grads. Obviously, the mayor has one, and we know lots of people around town that they have one or two. Jaleet had a couple, right? And then congrats, obviously, to the high school soccer team at One State about a week ago, a week and a half ago. So that would be, yeah, that, that's fantastic. And I think that's, that's really it. Just hopefully thank you to our teachers and educators and hope that they enjoy the summer as, as they finish out the school year. So that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. I would, finance is set at five. I'd also congratulate all the, all the graduates, and the golf team was also state champion. So we've got, we've got great things happening. And, and on a personal note, want to just talk about my two sons real fast. One, Hill, he, he graduated from, from Alabama, and so he's, he's out looking for a job, so I'm, I'm certainly proud of him. And then my, and then my youngest, Winston, he wanted me to thank everyone at the city. He just finished his Eagle Scout project where he put the AED devices on the Greenway Trail, on the extended Greenway Trail. So he, he really enjoyed doing that project, and, and what he expressed to me is that there were so many people coming by, walking by, and just thanking him for, for doing that. And, and he, you know, he worked with, with the chief to, you know, to find the best spots, you know, for that, for that area. So he, I'm, I'm really proud that, that that's in, and I, I hope, hope we never have to use it, but it's back there in case we, we needs, need to do that. So I just wanted to mention that. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Special issues to follow Public Works, and I have personally seen the handiwork from Hill and, I mean, Winston, sorry. And it is, they really are, they're great to have out there, and they look so nice. And Zane Glover actually emailed me and Jennifer today talking about it with some other suggestions, and I have just continued to enjoy the trail so much, and they're actually working on resurfacing the bridge currently. For those who frequent it, they, it had some, some slippery spots, so they've been fixing it, but they're doing that right now. But it's a great trail, and those, those AEDs are a nice addition.
We need to have a ribbon cutting for that.
We really do, yeah.
We do. I mean, that's a huge deal.
Yeah, we do, yeah. All right, so we'll work on that. All right, that's it. Oh, oh, and sorry, we cut the ribbon on the new fitness court in West Homewood last week. It was super fun. Counselor Anderson and I decided that we would do exercise demonstrations for some reason, and then we had a competition between the firemen and the police officers, and it was just, it was really fun. There was some, a great attendance, lots of Blue Cross Blue Shield folks, including their vice president of community affairs. So it was a really nice, a really nice event. That's it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Nelms?
Yes, we, Ward Four, we were able to have our community meeting with Sanford a couple of weeks ago, and the end result is basically that, you know, Sanford is, you know, keeping up the houses that are theirs. There's still a lot of confusion about constituents who want all of the rental houses to be Sanford's, you know, responsibility, and sometimes they have to kind of correct that. But other than that, I think the meeting went well. We got some information about one house in particular, Barry, do you remember that they're doing something? I'm sorry, I totally forget, but there's a house that they're doing something on that.
I can't remember, but I know they're getting ready to start working on the two that are on the corner of Curry Way and Lakewood, which we did not discuss in the meeting, but subsequently, some people asked about it, and they're getting ready to work on those this summer.
Yes, that's it, yes.
They're working on those this summer.
And so they're working on those. It's nothing really any different than your average, you know, community house that, you know, just needs repairs, but just because they have a target and a person, you know, someone to talk to, there's, you know, been some emphasis. So we try to follow up with that. Also, I want to congratulate my graduates that graduated from Homewood High School, and Diane and Deborah were in school with Braxton McCluskey since kindergarten, I think, or preschool. So all of them got to get out of there, and there's so many kids that I'm going to miss and just miss being a part of the school system in that way. It's just, I have not shed any tears, but I think I'm just kind of bracing myself for when it's really going to hit me. But I'm just grateful for that experience, the Star Spangled Girls, the band, you know, I, you know, I plan to still be there, but it's, it's really bittersweet to, you know, lose that part of what brought me to Homewood in the first place. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Andrus?
I do not need to set P and D, so while we're shedding tears, you know, say some prayers for all of us impacted by Birmingham Southern. Graduation is Friday, and doors are closing, and Go Panthers, the baseball team, is still playing, God love them, and is going to impact a lot of people in this community. So please keep us all in your prayers.
Mr. Harden?
On Mother's Day, my wife and I walked for the first time, phase two of the, of the trail, and were just flabbergasted how great it was. And I really came on the council after that was pretty much decided, so I take no credit for it. But it did make me think about all that this council has done for our city. And people claim, you know, I mean, we get some people throwing darts at us, this council has done an amazing amount of work for this city, and I just appreciate you guys. I, I just sit over here and kind of do whatever Jennifer tells me, but anyway. But I, I just want to thank you for that trail extension. It is so neat back up in there because you're, you're walking along the creek, you can't hear anything, and then there's a blue crane sitting over there in the water. So very grateful for the work that's been done. And my son did graduate from Auburn, so I'm down to two, two out and two, you know, my, my daughter's going back to Georgia Tech to get her PhD, but we don't have to pay for that, you know. So anyway, but thank you all.
Thank you. All right, I just got a couple of things. First, thank you to Mr. Jones for running the meeting while I was out in trial. I appreciate that very much. And then second, anyone that still wants to can come hear about City Manager tomorrow at the chamber luncheon where I will be speaking on that subject. So if anyone's still interested in information, call the chamber, see if you can still get in for lunch. I'm betting you can, and you can hear, hear all about it. So with that, I will go ahead and adjourn tonight, and we will see everyone in a few weeks.